Okay, ladies and gentlemen, can we stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's my pleasure to introduce Monroe's 2223 Teacher of the Year to the Board of Education this evening. Lisa Martinski has been in education for 34 years and a teacher in Monroe for the last 12, spending the majority of that time in her current role as a second grade teacher at Stephanie Elementary School. She served as a tech integrator and is the official unofficial photographer for most all events at Stephanie Elementary, as well as throughout the district and the town. This year, we received 168 nominations for 76 different teachers in the districts, in the district. Nominations came in from teachers, administrators, paraeducators, secretaries, parents, and students. But Lisa's nomination stood out. The theme that kept repeating itself in all of her nominations was caring, passionate, dedicated, creative, and going above and beyond. When the pandemic was at its height and kids were really missing that human interaction, Lisa was often found around Monroe at her students' front yards doing everything she could to maintain that connection with kids. She was also a tremendous resource to her colleagues utilizing and sharing her technology skills to keep students and teachers engaged as best as possible. She was described as embracing chaos and change like a champ in building unforgettable relationships, a true champion of education. I'm glad she's on our team. My pleasure to introduce Lisa Martinski. Monroe's Teacher of the Year.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Again.
Thank you, everyone.
Joe always does such a good job with these introductions. But Lisa, Lisa, just one second. I just want to add to that. No, you can stand.
Or Lisa, I told her, as soon as you're done, you can leave.
You can run out, and I'm stalling. I just wanted to add. Oh, boy, microphone problem. Just shut them off, Bob, I'll talk loud. I just wanted to add to Joe's comments, he always does such a good job with this. But over the last six years that I've been on the board, every time I sit on a committee for internal promotions, I am so impressed by the staff that we have here because I learned so much more about all of you. But I have to tell you, at convocation, what I learned about you was truly inspiring, and we are lucky to have you, and thank you very much. It's well deserved, so thank you. Now you can run out the door. Is there anyone here for public participation? Nick.
Thank you, Nicholas 4109 Meadows End Road. The decision of this board from June 6th continues to reverberate throughout the community, and I'd like to address some of the comments made and questions I still have from that vote. Chairman Ferris said to the Monroe Sun after the vote, quote, "I can't speak for any of the individual no voters. It's not a vote against transgender students. There are parents on this board with children in the LGBTQ+ community," end quote. First, it was precisely a vote against transgender students. With no one from the opposition side willing to speak to the motion, how else could it be interpreted? Second, if it is true that there are parents on this board with children in the LGBT+ community, wouldn't you have wanted to take the opportunity to explain why you would vote against the interests of your own children? The Monroe Sun continued, quote, "Without sharing specific details for his own decision to vote no, Ferris said, "I wasn't in favor of this specific policy, but I'm open to resolving some issues that come up in the future." Ferris said, "The door is not slammed shut on the issue. This board has not said no to anything, and that will continue," end quote. "No member of the majority has contacted me since June 6th in any way about this policy and how we can move it forward together. The door seems to not only be slammed shut, but locked with the key thrown away. And so I'd like to ask, what is the plan moving forward? Our students have told us in survey data that there is a problem, and I thought a way to begin this, at least at the board level, would be the DEI committee, but it has been hung up in policy for 15 months with no movement. And I will continue to press for a vote on that committee at the full board level in the months to come. There are a list of questions that I posed over a 12-month period that to date have yet to be answered. And if you wanted to vote no, that is completely up to you. But I will continue to ask these questions at every public participation until there is some kind of resolution or discussion on the merits of the policy, which still has yet to happen. The parents, and most importantly, the students who spoke in favor of it deserve at least that much. At the pride flag raising on June 11th, five days after June 6th, a parent and child came up to me, who I didn't know, and told me that they attend Monroe Public Schools. The parent asked me what had happened and that this should have been something that in our part of the country was a slam dunk, and I answered that I couldn't say because there was no discussion. After some more words with them, the student looked at me and said, "There's nothing wrong with me, so why don't they like me?" And I have heard that over and over again throughout the summer, and unfortunately, I still can't provide an answer to that question. Thank you.
Anyone else for public participation? Hearing none, we shall move on to the report of the chair. I would like to reply to Nick. Nick, on the night of June 6th, at that meeting, and your words and actions that followed, you attacked the six of us personally, you attacked me personally, you attacked the relationship with my child personally, you brought discredit to this board. We are not broken. We are solid in our support of this district. And you further damaged the mental health of all these kids by telling them that we don't care about them. And this is completely unacceptable, it is unprofessional, and you're in violation of our ethics policy. We need to move on for the benefit of this district. Thank you. We're moving on to the consent agenda. Ladies and gentlemen, any comments on the minutes? Hearing none? Sorry, go ahead, Alan. On the minutes? Or the warrant?
Consent agenda?
Yep, I was asking about the minutes. Are you okay with the minutes?
Yeah.
Okay, anything on the warrants? No questions on the warrants? Alan, I was just going to move through each letter, is that okay, or do you have a question on something?
Just about the new hires.
I don't want to miss you. Okay, that's where I'm going to go to next. Joe, you want to talk about notifications of new appointments?
Sure. Did you want to ask a question first, Alan?
Yeah, I'm not sure if I missed it, but I think there might be someone missing from the new hires. Because I see that someone was appointed to teach social studies because Jamie Sherry is the, she...
She's going to be the social studies instructional leader now, yes.
But I didn't remember seeing her name being appointed.
You're correct, she should probably be on the list of appointments. She shouldn't be on for new hires, but you're correct, she should be on for notification of appointments. If we want to amend the agenda, we can do that. But yeah, Emily Woznick is the, is her replacement as a, as a social studies teacher. So it's no change to the new hires. But in terms of notification of appointments, it would be a change there.
Do you want to make, make a motion to amend item?
D.
B, no, I'm sorry, C.
D, actually.
I'm sorry, number six? D?
Yeah.
Notification of appointments to add?
To add Jamie Sherry as instructional leader.
Thanks, thank you, Alan.
Thanks, Alan, for recognizing that. Motion by Alan to add that to the agenda. For a second, Dennis, any discussion, further discussion? No, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you very much, that will be added. Joe, continue with notifications of new hires and appointments.
Absolutely, I want to thank all of our staff, our, our school staff, and definitely the central office staff for all the work we had onboarding new staff this summer with retirements, staff movements, as Alan was just referencing, replacements and addition of new positions. We onboarded 27 new certified staff members this summer. Normally, we would have all those folks here with us, but since Jackie Hall is back to school nights this evening, we pushed back the introduction of the new staff until the next meeting. So our principals, who are here tonight to talk about the opening of school, will also be here at that meeting. But we do have 12 folks being appointed tonight. And speaking of the next item, which was the notification of appointments, we had a couple of exciting moves over the summer. First, while he's, he'll technically still be in the building, Mark Schwars, longtime assistant principal at Massey, was appointed to the position of STEM director, and Jackie Hall assistant principal. I'm really excited for Mark to, as he starts this next adventure in his professional career. With Mark's departure, and these are some of the dominoes that, that go right back into what Alan was talking about, with Mark's departure from Massey, the high school found itself in need of a new assistant principal. Ian Lowell, from the former history social studies instructional leader, was selected for that position. Ian has spent his entire career at Massey, first as a teacher, then as a department chair, and then as an instructional leader. He's done a lot of work at Massey, working to set up positive climate and culture for all of our students. We wish him the best of luck in his new position. And then with Ian's move from instructional leader to assistant principal, opened the position of secondary instructional leader in history social studies, which is being backfilled by Jamie Sherry. Jamie has been with us, I think, since 2012. She's been a teacher in the social studies department with us the entire time. She's actually also done some work at Valley Regional Adult Education. She's run our adult education program here as well. And I'm really excited for Jamie as she begins this next, next piece of her career. It's going to be a, a big, a big hit to the teaching staff. Jamie was an excellent teacher. I know when my daughter found out that she was leaving the ranks of teacher to administrator, she, she was, she was disappointed. But I'm excited for all three of them as they start this, this new ventures in their careers.
Absolutely, congratulations to all. Any questions to Joe at all on the consent agenda? No? Anyone want to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Thank you, Jerry, seconded.
Good choice, please, Chris.
Seconded by Christine. Any further discussion? No, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you very much. Moving on to the reports of the committees, we should have student reps here next meeting.
We'll be at the next meeting, yeah.
Okay, that's great, any other committee reports from anyone? No, it was a nice, easy summer, we're going to get back into full swing. Okay, we shall move on to the report of the superintendent, Joe.
Sure, the first two pieces go together. I'll, I'll kind of tee it off for the principals to come up and talk about the openings. But just wanted to thank everyone who was able to make it to convocation this year. For those who were, who were able to, or who weren't able to, we were also joined by our first selectman, Ken Kellogg, our state representative, Tony Scott, and our state senator, Marilyn Moore. Lisa left, Dave hit it on the head. The highlight of convocation was Lisa's speech and then ensuing slideshow was really, was really powerful. It was a really nice start to the year, and it was so great for the first time since 2019 to see smiling faces on kids, literally, as they walked in the doors on the first day, to be able to see their, to see their faces. The term I keep using, that there is a palpable sense of optimism at the start of this year. So I've asked the principals to give a brief update on the first few days at their building. And I didn't say who's going first, does anyone want to volunteer? Laura's got, Laura's got back to school night, so we'll go, like, usually we never start in the middle, but let's do that. Sure.
Just so I can get back to back to school night.
You could pick the next person, too.
No, no, no.
Wait, he's set tomorrow?
I won't do that, so no. Hi, good evening, I'm Laura Marm, the assistant principal over at Jackie Hall. We do have back to school night, so our principal, Julia Strong, is there representing and welcoming parents, and Mark, obviously, is at STEM in his new role. So I want to say congratulations to both of them. The start of school has gone really well. Shout out to Rob Orsino and our summer crew, getting the job of sparkling and shining and painting and moving. That was great, our building looks really, really wonderful. Also, our administrative assistants, Joanne Supan and Lauren Guerrero and Adrian Zimmer, did a great job getting schedules and papers and lockers. We had enrolled 40 new students at our campus. So it was a lot of, a lot of stuff to, moving parts to get everybody on and ready for the first day of school. So we appreciate that. Again, yes, looking and watching the students' faces coming off those buses and smiling and engaging and interacting appropriately with their peers, it was just great. And the teachers did a wonderful job welcoming them, helping them with their lockers and with the schedules, all of that. So it was really a nice start to the year, we really did enjoy it. I do want to thank the board for supporting us with a new social worker, Crystal, Crystal Adolfo. Dolphy has started, she's jumping right in. And with that, we also have a Lions Pride alternative program to help students who maybe not be able to access their classroom on a daily basis. And so we have Nicole Webel, who is also part of our staff. So those two additions have really been very, very helpful over at Jackie Hall. Julia wanted me to mention that we are doing school-wide instructional goals in the area of communication to uphold our core competencies with the Monroe vision of the graduate. And we are also looking to begin our work with Ruler. So those are two initiatives we are looking forward to doing. Our PTO has been wonderful. Diane McCaffrey and Allison Bitner provided a teacher supply buffet with dry erase markers and Post-It notes, and we really did enjoy that. We got some soft seating in our guidance department, and they are, they also provided popsicles. And they are planning students at the Castle Hill Farm in Newtown for a bonfire and hayride. So the PTO has been really getting started on getting us back to normal. So I did want to shout out on those. Thank you, Julia, for the script. Thank you very much. And anybody else who wants to go next? I'm going to jump out and go back to back to school night. Thank you.
Work, work right across, thanks.
Good thing the rain came for the board, boy.
Good evening, everybody. Monroe Elementary started with a really positive vibe, we're excited to be back. Our tagline this year is that we are intriguing, exciting, and motivating not only ourselves as colleagues, but our students. We've been really thinking about student-centered classrooms and how we can, another tagline is progress, not perfection. So how can we meet students where they are this year and just move them forward? We have been learning more about responsive classroom practices. So everyone is starting again with morning meetings this year, but we're really focusing on kids getting in circles, saying good morning to each other, looking each other in the eye, some of those things that have been missing the last couple of years. We have quiet time in the middle of the day, so everyone just sort of settles down and resets. We have calming corners in classrooms. And we have been looking at environments, so we're looking at flexible seating options, and how can we just get kids to feel comfortable and safe in school, for sure. We are expanding, so as you likely know, we added a fifth grade, but we also added a preschool, so you should definitely, preschool classrooms, so you should definitely check out our new art room, which is in the conference room, the old conference room of central office. But preschool is continuing to grow, so that's definitely something we'll be talking about this year, for sure. We have our back to school bash tomorrow, so the whole school will be there as long as the weather holds out. And Monroe L is just continuing our motto, which is to work hard and be kind. So I'm excited for this year.
Thanks, girl.
Thank you.
Nick, you have a story to tell.
Do I? Although it was kind of nice to have a little delay this morning, but all went well. And luckily, the power came back on earlier than expected. But we also had a great start to our year at Stephanie. We welcomed back 24, well, we welcomed 25 new students, and a total of 482 are back in our building. One new one came today. Our building looks amazing, thanks to Mr. Perkins. Diane and I were buddies all summer, so thank you to Diane. So we really had a great opening, which did start with our convocation. This was my first in Monroe, and I was just so highly impressed. It really set the tone for the year, and we continued that, those messages we had at convocation right back in our building. So at the faculty meeting, we talked about our vision of the graduate, ruler, newness, community perspective, learning each child's story, and remembering that each child does need a champion, like Lisa taught us. The faculty selected a word at our meeting that really captured how they wanted to feel during the year, and they recorded that word on a rock, which is a reminder, sometimes we may not feel that way, but we can always get back to that feeling at some point. And that really kicked off our work for Ruler throughout the rest of the year. So our theme this year at Stephanie is Be You, Be Kind Each Child Every Day. And we discussed this to start our year, the power of energy. And our book for the year is going to be Be You by Peter Reynolds. So as a welcome back, our staff worked in teams to read a page from the book, and then we sent out that video to the community at the start of the year. So our goal was really to set the tone for a positive year. So lots of good work has already started at Stephanie, the kids are happy, and we're really proud to have them back. But just a quick story of something that stuck out to me last week. One of our fifth graders was on bus patrol. So Patty Sudo has organized bus patrol for years, she does a phenomenal job. So this fifth grader was bringing kids out to the bus, and as he got to the bus door, he stopped and put his little hand out and gave each child a high five as they got onto the bus. And to me, you know, that positive energy was contagious, and I kind of was like, everybody look at him. Everybody follow him, because that's the energy we want in our building this year. So we're looking forward to a great year at Stephanie, and thank you for all the support, and we're excited, so thank you.
Hi, everyone. So the start of the school year at Fawn Hollow was also just wonderful. And like Joe said, it was noticeably different seeing children get off the school bus without a face mask requirement, without worrying about cohorting, without having like too many buses in the driveway at the same time. So what I noticed was a lot of children high-fiving staff members, high-fiving each other, even hugging teachers. And it was really positive and really happy, and just so, so wonderful to see. As you know, we hired a lot of staff this year, folks brand new to Fawn Hollow, as well as other folks new to their positions, and everyone is acclimating quite nicely. And I am sure you'll get to learn more about them in the coming weeks. I think you'll really enjoy meeting them. They are terrific, and rest assured that Monroe was really able to hire the best and the brightest. We are working on a couple of schedule adjustments, very, very minor, nothing too surprising for the start of the school year, specifically with just ironing out some wrinkles in the bus schedules and whatnot. But by and large, an excellent opening. Big shout out to our custodial crew over the summer. They did their regular deep cleaning, but they also did some more expansive projects. Some of you, I think, remember seeing our very antiquated freezer when you did the walkthrough. And you'll be happy to know there's a brand-new shiny unit, much more efficient. We also did some sidewalk enhancements that really changed the look of the front entryway, as well as the parent drop-off area, so that's been, been lovely. So thank you to Dan Kropfsek and the work of our custodial team. The secretaries just go above and beyond every summer, getting all of those papers in and immunizations, so I'll thank them as well. One thing that we're especially happy about this year is the Ruler program. So thank you so much for providing the funding for that. It's very well received by the staff. We've already had great discussions about the impact of emotions and how we want to feel every day at work, and it's going to continue all year. And I just think the fact that every school was able to have training and their own implementation team was really a good way to do it, so thank you for that. We're looking forward to back to school night later this week, as well as our back to school social on Friday. And one of our exciting initiatives this year is the possibility of an outdoor learning space. I talked to the PTO over the summer, and we're going to be forming a committee to learn more about what kind of outdoor learning space would work with Fawn Hollow's grounds and, and what would be important to us, and how we can, how we can bring it to our school. So that's it for Fawn Hollow.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Not to be outdone, Steve did a PowerPoint. I'm a visual learner, sorry. Can you go to the first one, go? First one, first line? That's the last, there we go. Sorry, I'm a Star Wars geek, too. So what I love about this year is, even though it's my third year here, I, I feel like it's my first. You know, and, and I think the last couple of years in COVID, and I think Joe, over the last couple of years in conversations, you know, was just like, man, I really hope you get to see Massey, you know, like it was, you know? And coming into this year, I feel like the first eight days, it's probably, we're starting to see more and more of what it was. I think we saw some of it in the spring of last year, once, once the masks came off and, and things settled down. Last year, while it seemed like a quick year, it was a long year, too, especially from, you know, August, the end of August, through probably spring break. You know, it was just a long, long year. And then from the end of the year, we didn't really want the year to end because we were starting to see glimpses of what could be. And in the first eight days, hope. So when I started thinking about the new year, I thought of, again, being a Star Wars geek, a new hope. So I, you know, the, the intro to Star Wars, and I didn't bore you with the entire intro to the movie, but it started over the summer. The younger Mr. Perkins and his crew did a great job getting Massey ready for, for teachers to return, as did the, the office staff. And we have about 30 to 32 new families, I'll throw it out here now. October 10th, we're having our new to Massey family dinner. You are all invited to attend if you can. The Massey PTC is sponsoring that. They are also sponsoring our senior barbecue tomorrow at noon. I know it's a late invite, but you get all the emails, so you, you know what's going on. If you want to come by, please do. But we talked about a new hope, we talked about Return of the Panthers, and really looking to restore pride in the school. And, you know, so on the opening faculty meeting, I asked teachers to, to just kind of post what their new hope for the new year was, and these are some of the ones, go, these are some of the things that, that teachers, you know, anonymously put. And I'm not going to read them all to you, but, you know, you get a sense of get to know students and make connections, you know? Develop relationships with students, help them identify their pathways. My hope is to not sweat the small stuff, to have a positive and productive year. You know, make beautiful music together, you know? All of them just, and I have, you know, many, many more of these, but they're all, teachers came back, I think, the same way. Just having a glimpse of what it was, what it could be, you know? At the end of last year, I think they had a good summer. Although Ralph, I think we really got a look into quiet time in the middle of the day? I don't know. I don't know, there's something about it. But, you know, teachers really came back positive and ready to go, and you can feel the energy in the building. And I think we came back united to just provide kids with making connections to school and to each other. So, so our kind of, you know, theme for the year is connections, rigor, and responsibility. You know, and we started with connections, and if you want to go to the next one, Joe, please. So we started with the faculty. So we did some of the, you know, the Bonatini laundry list of things you just have to say at your first faculty meeting, and then we played some games. We basically took all the, you know, those, you know, horrific or terrific, depending on your perspective, pep rally games, and we had the departments, you know, compete against each other. We did, you know, the spoon on the egg race. We did, you know, wrap one of them in toilet paper. You know, we did Name That Tune, and we had some fun, you know, while building connections with, within departments, but also, you know, as a staff to really start the year off on the right foot. And then we welcomed kids, obviously, you know, that week, too. And, and I think the energy that's in the building is, you know, again, a result of the professional staff that we do have. There was a lot of movement, as, as you know, and you've seen through the appointments, you know? But also, we've got another, you know, 30 to 32 new families, you know, in the school that we need to welcome as well. So we are just, there is a new hope for this year in, in getting kids connected to school again. And it goes beyond the classroom, and that's where our focus is going to be, is getting kids connected to each other and to the school. So thank you.
Thanks.
Very, very nice start to the year, really, really nice start to the year. It really definitely feels different this year, for sure. I just wanted to give a quick update, I'll give this update now, and then the next time we'll talk is October 1. There's really only two official, you know, attendance times of the year. The October 1 enrollment, and then the last day of school enrollment. So I just wanted to share where we were at the end of, at the end of last school year and kind of where we are now at each of our schools, and just, you know, highlight some areas that, you know, we're definitely keeping an eye on, Kelly already talked about the first one at Monroe Well. You see where we are, we had to add the third section, which we knew coming into this year, because that had been a section of three coming, coming through Monroe Well before that. But the big area at the, at the preschool, where we have about 83 kids right now. Last year, we finished up with about 76. That's a number that generally only tends to increase. We don't anticipate our, our neighborhood kids who are part of that program to, to grow too much more. We did kind of front load the neighborhood kids in, so as we add, because you're supposed to keep a ratio, 50/50? 50/50? A 50/50 ratio of students with special education services and non-special education services. So, so we do have room for our, our new students that, that come in. So we're definitely keeping a close eye on, on that at Monroe Well. Fawn Hollow, the biggest thing that kind of jumped out at me is just, you know, this, this huge bump from last, I mean, it's that, it's that kindergarten group that we saw last year, that 126. That's just them moving to first grade, so last year, grade 98, first grade, that's, that'll, this bump will continue all the way through until they, until they're done. But overall, I But overall, at the school, you know, a net of, a net of nine. The elementaries all have a positive net. The middle school and high school have negative net and it all, we're about three under. Stephanie Elementary. The big one was in July, I talked to you all about having to add this fourth section here. We had had three sections in first grade with seventy students. Over the summer, we had another five students enroll going into, going into second grade. So having three second grade sections with twenty-five, you know, with kids that had, yeah, think about what their first grade and their kindergarten experiences were, was, you know, was not going to be acceptable. So so we had to add that fourth section to that, that cohort of students. So now they're four all the way across. One of my areas I'll be looking out for this year, and I'm sure, you know, Ash and I will be talking. Right now, they have a pretty large cohort of three of seventy-six in fifth grade. Again, that's fifth grade, it's a little bit older. It wasn't quite seventy, seventy-six when the, when the summer started. But the odds are is that these floors are all going to push down. And this three will eventually, probably if the trends continue, be replaced by a fourth kindergarten section next year at Stephanie. So that's my guess. Middle school and the high school. Yeah, I think the biggest thing was the high school, well, really the biggest hit to high school happened in the senior year. Last year's senior class was probably the biggest senior class we've had in a long time. Close to three hundred kids. I haven't seen that in a while. So coming in with two fifty-one, forty-six students left, but then, you know, twenty-three students additionally in grades nine through, nine through eleven. So that's, that's where we stand right now. And we constantly look at this stuff, but I'll, I'll give you another update again on October one. Does anyone have any questions on enrollment?
Special education?
Yep.
Just have an update to the, the financials. So I just have to add that up to you. Everything else is in the board pack. So good evening, everyone. Twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three is said to be an exciting school year for the special education department. We've welcomed five special education teachers and a new school psychologist to our growing staff. And for the first time, I'm very happy to announce that the district has employed two board certified behavior analysts and they're now employees of Monroe Public Schools, which is wonderful. So as we stated last year, our additional staff is well needed as our enrollment numbers continue to increase. If you take a look at the enrollment chart I prepared, which is in your board pack, it's on page ninety, somewhere along there. Our special education enrollment in June was five hundred and forty-four students. We then reduced our number to five oh-nine after calculating our thirty-five graduates last year. So over the summer, we registered nine students. We had six students who were dismissed and/or moved out of the district and we found two students eligible. So with, with these changes, we welcomed five hundred and fourteen identified students to the start of the school year. This keeps our percentage of special education students at fifteen percent of the district's total population, which is the same as last year. So we continue to fall just below the state average, which is still sixteen percent. So in reviewing our data from last year, there are three trends that have been identified that significantly impact our rates of referrals. The first one is an increase in our social emotional referrals. Although we did have a small number of out of district placements last year, they were all for social emotional, the students were all struggling with social emotional health, with their social emotional health. Another trend was an increase in reading referrals by both school teams and parents in the lower grades. So in order to mitigate the strategy, we are, we trained some extra staff this summer in reading programs, such as the Orton-Gillingham Reading Program and Wilson. And we are continuing to collaborate with our school teams, our reading specialists and our SRVI teams to keep working on that. And we're always researching new methods to utilize with students. And our third trend that we saw last year was also an increase in our preschool referrals from birth to three. So when students are referred to us from birth to three, they are already receiving services that they had prior to three years old. So as you know, we added that fourth class in preschool that Kelly already talked about. And we are monitoring that pre-K enrollment because as you just saw, we are at eighty-three right now for the year already. And we have many referrals that have already come in through birth to three. So we're working on that and we're watching that. So those were the trends that we saw last year. This summer, we had our annual extended school year services. It ran for four weeks in the month of July and the district welcomed a hundred and thirty students into that program. Our student attendance was, our students attendance was excellent this summer. And I really want to thank all of our teachers and our paraeducators and related service staff who worked this summer. They were excellent. CTSEDS, we talked about that in the spring of last year, is the state's new IEP software program that went live in July. And so during July and in early August, we had, we chose ten expert trainers within the district to go to training at the state level to learn about this new platform. So Marissa Memley, our new assistant director, trained our special education teachers, our related service staff, and administrative assistants during our professional development days in August. And ongoing support is going to continue as our teachers transition to this new platform. So we're constantly, you know, accepting phone calls and making phone calls and trying to help teachers out with learning this new progress. And a huge help from Marissa because she's been excellent. She is our CTSEDS guru. So we really appreciate all the work she's done. So thank you. In addition to our staff, we will also be offering parent nights in the early fall to support parents in understanding this new IEP. So we'll have evening nights where the parents can pop in. We're probably going to do it at each different level. We'll do elementary, middle, and high. So if they have any questions, we can go through that with them. So that's our CTSEDS update. Any questions about any of those things? Okay, so I just gave you an update to my year-to-date budget, from my year-to-date budget report that was in the packet. So I'm just going to talk about that now. So overall, we're trending well. We continue to encumber funds for student programming as we receive contracts from outside schools and providers. We do anticipate a small number of students who will need placement changes or adjustments in the fall. But as you can see, there are two lines that directly relate to our extended school year services that are currently overspent. These lines are overspent due to changes in students ESY programming during the annual reviews last year. And transportation was naturally impacted by these changes as well. So if you look in your packet that I gave you, the lines that were impacted was on page two. The other professional OTPT summer line is over, a little over eight hundred dollars. And that's due, as I said, due to changes in student programming. And also, if you look on page five, transportation, special education summer is over a little over nine thousand. Again, that's impacted from student programming. That change is impacted to student, from student programming. So another line that's currently overspent is our occupational therapy and physical therapy line for both in district and out of district students. Due to the increase in identified students and changes in student programming, students program related services, we, that increased from last year. So that's on page three. If you look there, there's our other professional occupational therapy, physical therapy, and that's for the school year twenty-two, twenty-three. And that line's overspent at thirty-eight hundred at this moment. So as we always talk about, our special education programming is fluid and changing throughout the school year. And these examples that I have shown you here in regards to our increases in tuition and transportation will definitely be taken into consideration when we start planning our budget in the coming weeks. And I just want to say that at the start of the school year, we have seen all of our students return from their programming since COVID. So we did have a lot of students at work utilizing their program last year. So all of our students are back in, in their programs. So please note that that special education surplus that has been returned in the past two years was due to students not accessing their programming. So we will continue to be transparent in all changes to student programming when we present monthly as the year progresses. Does anybody have any questions?
With regard to legal fees, do you think there's anything that you and your new team could do to bring those down?
I would love to say yes, but I'm not sure as of, at this point right now. Right now, we, I think that we could possibly be under that number that we have budgeted at the moment, but I just can't predict what's going to happen going forward.
Can we just say a little high last year, last couple of years?
They were definitely. A couple of years, yep.
Anybody else?
Thanks. Lee started stealing some of my thunder because I just wanted to give some summer work updates. I want to, you know, begin by thanking and crediting Dan Krosick and our outstanding maintenance staff for all the work they did preparing our schools for the first day. And like Lee said, in addition to all the regular maintenance that gets completed over the summer, there were a number of much needed larger projects that also got addressed this summer. Couple of common ones at the schools, Jockey Hollow and Masek, probably the two, the two biggest projects were the removals of the underground oil tanks and replacements with above ground fuel tanks for the generators at each school. All the elementary school playgrounds got wood chips per safety guidelines. Masek, Jockey Hollow, and Stephanie were all the recipients of new steamers in their kitchen, in their cafeterias this summer. And there's a lot of tree work and perimeter work done, especially at Stephanie Elementary and Monroe Elementary, where the woods line actually invaded into the, into the fields. I mean, it was amazing. We cut back brush at both those schools and realized that we still have backstops and benches and stuff in there. They just grown so much over time, you know, a couple inches a year. Makes a big deal. Makes a big difference. Till Lee's point, we already said, the new, the new refrigerator freezer at, at Fawn Hollow, the extension of the sidewalk. And then when we walked around Fawn Hollow last year, you may have remembered, we talked about replacing a number of countertop sinks and drains. We do that in-house with our, with our maintenance staff. So we've been trying to pick that off a little bit every year at Fawn Hollow. At Monroe Elementary, we had a removal and replacement of a total of two hundred feet of underground steam pipe for the heating system. As Kelly mentioned, we added a new classroom for the preschool program, which we had to put a bathroom in there. And then that then included the relocation of the art room upstairs to the old conference room. If you get a chance to come up and check it out, it actually looks like a really cool art studio. Megan Anderson and Katie Nunez, the teachers that are teaching art up there, did a really nice job. And then there was some paving done. There was that huge pothole out in the front of, on the front of Monroe Elementary that finally got taken care of. That thing was a freeze hazard every winter when it filled up with water and then turned to ice. Probably one of the bigger in size projects happened at Stephanie Elementary with the new gym floor. The removal and installation of that new gym floor, which was like, we pushed right up against the first days of school to get that ready. They did some other concrete walk, I'm sorry, concrete work along the sidewalk. And they also replaced a lot of the blinds in the classrooms at Stephanie as well. At Jockey Hollow, one of the big projects there was the complete restoration of the, of the gym floor. So they, I think about every ten to twelve years, they go down, they strip it all the way down. And then, you know, re-stripe it and refinish it and re-wax it. They are waiting, they, I think they put in for a new scoreboard and scorer's table. So that's supposed to come later this month. They upgraded the electronics for their elevator there at Jockey Hollow. And finally, Masek, some of the bigger projects were the replacement. If you remember last year, we walked around the auditorium, the replacement of the auditorium floor there. They are putting a nurse's, a window in the nurse's office. Our nurses have a kind of an interior room, but I think it will come out over here. But like every supply chain issue right now, we're waiting for a window. So right now it's a board, but they'll have a new window in there to upgrade the ventilation. And then they did a lot of paving in the back of the, in the back of the building here that needed to be done. So a ton of, a ton of work was done this summer and I think Dan Krosick, if he could have cloned himself, you know, might have been able to get to all of it at the same day. But just a tremendous job, been a whole team.
He did do a lot of, he and his staff did a lot of great work over the summer.
My last two pieces are just two quick announcements. We have two negotiations on the plate right now. The custodians and teachers, we've had initial discussions with the custodians. And again, teachers in the next few days, thanks to both Dennis and Dave for volunteering to sit on those committees. And then hopefully everyone got the email I sent today with the CAPE CAPS convention. They finally came out with an agenda. So if you wanted to take a look at it and see, Friday is usually the more, the day that generally tends to have more substantive items on their agenda. So if anyone's interested in going, let us know that Terry or I know and we'll get us signed up. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. We'll move on to old business to which there is none, which takes us to new business. Item number A, discussion and possible action of face mask coverings policy with a vote anticipated. I just wanted to remind everyone that we have a while back with COVID, enacted a face mask policy. There are three different numbers on that. And in February, we suspended that because of the new recommendations. And that suspension ended on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. So my recommendation is that we resuspend that policy until December thirty-first of this year. So the, the motion that we have in our agenda needs to be changed to December thirty-one, twenty-two unless anyone objects. The reason for that is I looked up our policy and our policy says that when we suspend a policy, it has to be for a specific date. So I want to add that in there without objection. And also that I recommend that as a board, we send the the face masks slash coverings policy back to, back to the future. A new hope. That we send it back, I was all serious. Wow. That we send it back to policy committee for review and probably just to delete the policy. And we can move forward based on any recommendations that are provided. Hopefully it's passed us. So that's what I have to say on it. Can I have a motion and then?
I meant it to burn it. No, sorry. Motion to bring it back to policy committee to sustain that policy.
Okay, so Dennis, you're making the motion to suspend the current face mask coverings policy until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two and possible review and recommendations of the policy committee. Thank you. Second on that? Christine? Thank you. Any further discussion next?
Yeah, just a question. Since the beginning of the school year, which I know is like a couple of weeks old, but, and until December thirty-first, until we deal with this and officially get rid of it, this, by rescinding it or by suspending it, it doesn't prohibit anyone from wearing a mask if they want?
Absolutely not.
No.
And so, I mean, we don't know what's going to happen in six months, a year, two years, and three years. But thankfully, if this is all done and over, is that something that we would revisit at some point with that? Is that what you're looking for from the policy committee?
Yeah, looking for, we either have to keep suspending it or we have to change the policy or delete the policy. So it'd be just really up to, up to the policy committee. I think at this point, we would, my recommendation would be to delete the policy because if any state or federal mandates come down, we have to follow them anyway. So, or have a discussion, you know, on that. And I do agree that masks should be optional for people. If they want to wear them, they wear them. It's just, there's no policy on it. So if you want to wear it, you wear it, you know, if you don't, you don't.
Right.
Any further discussion? Comments? No? Okay, all in favor? Unanimous? Thank you very much. Motion passes. New business number B, approval of Paraeducators Union Collective Bargaining Agreement for period of July one, twenty twenty-one to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Joe, you have any comments on that?
No, once again, I just like to thank, Dave sat in on those negotiations with us and I thank the paraeducators who ratified this contract earlier this, this afternoon.
Motion to approve as stated.
Motion by Dennis to approve the draft motion as stated in the agenda. Jerry seconded. Any further discussion? I want to add that I was in on that and I believe it worked out best for everybody and thanks to everybody involved in that. Anything further? No? All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you very much. Item eleven, Mr. Stevens, adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Do you have a second?
One comment before that? Perfect. Sorry, the convocation video, is that up anywhere? That was amazing.
Oh, Lisa's video?
Yeah, it was amazing. I don't know whether everybody saw it.
It's a good question.
For those who weren't there, you need this. See this.
Motion to adjourn seconded by Christine. I'm driving forward. All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you very much. Good night.